Please let me call to order Bristol, Tennessee Council Meeting of October 12, 2021. Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Turner?
Here.
Fire Robin? Absent. Keane?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here. I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet has been made, has been provided as you entered City Council chambers for those individuals desiring to address City Council during the Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. At this time, I would like to ask Police Chief Matt Austin to lead us in our invocation, and following, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for all the many blessings that you give to us daily. In our hearts, we plan our course, but we pray you establish our steps. Please be with our leaders tonight. Give them wisdom and discernment and courage to make decisions that will move this city forward. Let us pray that, let there be plans be orchestrated by you. Father, let your will be done in this meeting. We won't fail to praise you, honor you, and give you all the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three proclamations on tonight's agenda. First, we have a proclamation designating the month of October 2021 as Community Planning Month in Bristol, Tennessee. I would like to ask Councilman Chad Keane to read this proclamation. And Ms. Sherith Young, Planning Services Manager, is with us this evening to address council on the significance of the proclamation.
Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and planners are, can help manage discharge in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play. Whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be equally involved in making choices that determine the shared vision of their neighborhoods, and whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Planning, National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association enforces National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery. Whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us an opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and the dedication of members of planning, members of the planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the Department of Development Services of Bristol, Tennessee, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service for these professionals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor of Bristol, Bristol, the City of Tennessee does hereby proclaim the month of October 21 as Community Planning Month in the city of Bristol, Tennessee, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. This 12th day of October 2021, Mayor, Maelyn Luttrell.
Ms. Young?
Good evening. Thank you all so much tonight for taking the time out to read the proclamation and recognize Community Planning Month. I want to just start, and I'll be very brief, but thank council for the time tonight to do this, and also for your guidance on some of the, all of the planning projects and topics that we work on throughout the year. We're celebrating this nationally as a profession, but I really can't think of a more exciting place to be than Bristol, Tennessee right now as far as planning goes. There's just so many, many exciting and wonderful things that are coming down the pike, but just wanted to take just a second to really thank the Planning Division staff, so Ross, Heather, Stephen, Stephen, Christina, who do so much hard work day by day, and then also the Planning Commission members who work tirelessly month by month to pursue and push planning along in the city of Bristol. So, thank you all tonight so much for recognizing Community Planning Month.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation designating October 2021 as Adverse Childhood Experiences Awareness Month in Bristol, Tennessee. I would like to ask Vice Mayor Vince Turner to read the proclamation. And with us tonight, Ms. Kay Ward of Bristol's Promise is here to address council on the significance of this proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas adverse childhood experiences such as poverty, racism, abuse, neglect, a parent who suffers from substance abuse or mental illness, and unsafe neighborhoods, or harmful, harmful events that happen during childhood. And whereas studies in the fields of neurobiology, psychology, epigenetics, child development, and medicine, among others, show that ACEs create toxic stress in children, significantly increasing a person's risk for chronic disease, obesity, premature death, mental illness, substance abuse, incarceration, and becoming a victim of violence in adulthood, and can be passed on to the next generation. And whereas ACEs have been declared a public health crisis by the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, and nearly 60% of adults in Tennessee report at least one ACE with economic burdens, and Tennessee estimated the Sycamore Institute to be 5.2 billion annually. And whereas positive childhood experiences such as feeling safe and protected by an adult in the home, relationships with at least one responsible, non-parental adult who is involved, or feeling a sense of belonging to a larger group, are supportive systems that can offset ACEs. And whereas research shows that adults who reported high numbers of ACEs, but also high numbers of PCEs, reported 72% lower levels of adult depression and/or poor mental health, and a 1,200% greater chance of a child flourishing. And whereas by working together through innovative collaborative approaches to prevent or mitigate the negative effects of ACEs that can help individuals build resilience to adversity through safe, stable, and nurturing relationships at home and in the community. And whereas in 2019, through Bristol's Promise, Bristol launched a trauma-informed system of care as best practice following recommendations to do so by Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration. Therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee does hereby recognize the month of October 2021 as PACES Awareness Month, and Thursday, October 28, 2021, as PACES Action Day in Bristol, and encourages all residents to become informed about the impacts of ACEs and toxic stress, and learn of the PCEs that promote prevention, healing, and resilience in children, adults, communities, in order to build a stronger and healthier Bristol. This proclamation indicates our commitment to exploring ways to make Bristol a resilient community for all its citizens. Mayor, Maelyn Luttrell.
On behalf of the Bristol's Promise Board of Directors, I would like to thank Mayor Luttrell and the City Council for your ongoing support of programs that promote the health and the well-being of our community's children. As we all become more aware of ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, and their potential for lifelong negative health outcomes, it is also important for our community to become aware of PACES, Positive Childhood Experiences, and those are the key factors in offsetting these negative impacts. I would also like to invite you to join us for Bristol's Promise Trauma Responsive Care Network meeting on PACES Action Day, October 28, at 10 o'clock a.m. via Zoom. And also, I would like to extend the invitation for you to visit the Bristol's Promise website at www.bristlespromise.org, as well as the organization's Facebook page for further information on PACES. Again, our thanks for your continued support for our children of our community and for today's proclamation.
Next, we have a proclamation designated October 21 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Bristol, Tennessee. I would like to ask Councilwoman Lee Powers to read the proclamation. Ms. Debbie Richmond is Executive Director of Branch House, is with us this evening to address council on the significance of this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas domestic violence transcends racial, ethnic, religious, and socioeconomic borders, and its perpetrators harm their victims, endanger children, traumatize families, and threaten our communities, we know that one in four women and one in seven men have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner in the United States. One in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year in the U.S., and 90% of these children are eyewitnesses to this violence. 72% of all murder-suicides involve an intimate partner in the U.S., with 94% of the victims of these murder-suicides being female. How tragic. In 2020, across the state of Tennessee, there were 69,385 domestic violence instances reported, and on a typical day, there were more than 20,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. 90 people were murdered in Tennessee in 2020 in a domestic violence incident, and victims of violence should have access to medical and legal services. We believe counseling, transitional housing, and other supportive services are essential so that they may escape the cycle of abuse. And whereas, it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of violence, and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. Local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and its prevalence. They're also dedicated to eliminating it through prevention and education. Whereas not only the local entities or the county entities have a moral obligation, so does our state, the state of Tennessee, to work to prevent domestic violence and to address its brutal and destructive effects. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee does hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Bristol, and encourages citizens to educate themselves on the seriousness of domestic violence and the prevalence of this epidemic in our lives. This, the 12th day of October 2021. Mayor Maelyn Luttrell.
Thank you, council and mayor. I'm going to speak from my heart today, and bear with me. I've spent the last 32 years of my life involved with domestic violence victims, and I want to say thank you to council and to the city of Bristol for making Domestic Violence Awareness Month October. I want to remember all the victims who have died in domestic violence incidents, and namely, I want to mention Officer Mark Vance and Sergeant Steve Hinkle, who died answering domestic violence calls to keep us all safe. I want to thank you for honoring all the domestic violence victims who are survivors, and I want to remember all the advocates who daily work with domestic violence victims. I and so many people are honored to know that the city of Bristol and the council care about the citizens of Bristol and their welfare. Thank you very much for making this Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Mayor, if I could just say, we've heard two impassioned responses to the proclamations today. Kay works diligently with our students through the Community Resource Center. She's been involved with the Bristol, Tennessee City Schools for more than 30 years. Debbie Richmond has been involved, as she said, for well over 30 years in the pursuit of trying to comfort those and eradicate domestic violence as best as we can. I'm sure that we can all understand the link between ACEs and domestic violence, and the impact that both of these have on our children, and I hope that we'll just all remember as we go through this next month and the coming days, to be aware of what's going on around us, reach out to people in need, and to reach out to our children as best we can. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like quickly just to add on to that, just for a second, is that, you know, it takes a special person to work in this field, and, you know, from experience I've had, you know, we have two of the best, and my hat's off to you, and thank you so much for all that you do. Next, we'll move on to presentations. We have tonight with us the Executive Director of Bristol Public Library, Ms. Tanya Kessner, and Mr. TJ DeWitt, Director of Jones Creativity Center, to provide counsel with information regarding programs and community events at the Bristol Public Library. Tanya?
Well, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of the Bristol Public Library. For those of you that may not know me in the audience, again, my name is Tanya Kessner, and I have a nice slide that shows that. So, it's been maybe four or five months since we've been here to represent the library and talk about what's happening, sort of give you an update, and that's what I want to do tonight. I think the last time I was here was June, and we were talking about going fine free. So, I'll try not to talk too much about the updates of the library, but there's a lot that's been going on, and the fine free has been a success. We became a fine-free library on July 1, and we have definitely seen, for instance, one of the successes is that our children's circulation of books have gone up 34% since we, in the last three or four months that we've been fine, fine free. So, that's already one success, and the card registration for kids has gone up as well. Patrons are super appreciative, especially those with small children, and there was a testimonial from the circulation staff that talked about, gives a good example of that. We had a mother come in to the circulation desk, and she said she wasn't going to get her kids' library cards because she has several kids, and she just knew that they would just be bogged down with fines all the time, but she brought her four kids in because she saw that we were going fine free, and got them all library card, and they got to check out books. So, that's exactly why we're doing that. We want children to have access to books. Reading is a skill and one that needs to be practiced for children to succeed in school and life. So, raising a new generation to succeed also lifts our community, so we're happy about that. Also, we've been doing some, you know, we're still dealing with the pandemic, but we've continued to offer programs for all ages. Some of those I've listed here. We've done adult crafts, grab-and-go kits for all ages. We've continued, curbside is now permanent service, teen gaming, course book clubs, moon viewings, all kinds of things that we've continued to do. Also, story walks, we've continued that as well, and I talked about that the last time I was here, but that's pretty popular for families. In addition, as of October 1, we have a new teen librarian. Her name is Abby Powers, and one thing that she's doing that I'm excited about is she's also going to offer teen programs at our EvoCA branch. So, we are having our adult programs and coordinator, marketing coordinator, and our children's librarian, when she's able to get back to work, do programs at EvoCA as well, because for a while, they haven't been doing that, and I want us to get back to doing that because we want both our Tennessee and Virginia patrons to have access to the same quality of programs by those who are trained to do it. And I think it unifies us even more, makes us one, more of a team when we're offering the same programs, and we're not always doing different things. I mean, EvoCA has its own special community and clientele, but we want to offer the same quality programs, and so we're going to start doing that. All right, let's start. Statistically, okay, we've been doing pretty good with circulation. As you can see, we're doing well. During the past fiscal year, Maine circulated over 206,000 items, and our EvoCA branch circulated over 24,000. Both of our branches had a combined 426 Zoom participants and checked out 78,000 eBooks and audiobooks, and these stats, of course, do not include everything that the Jones Creativity Center does for the library. Also during this time, the Stairwell atrium was completed, so we realized that this space was not being utilized as it could be to its full potential, so we've added some tables and chairs, and some specialized acoustical wall covering on both sides, at the top of the steps and at the bottom of the steps. And people have, library patrons and staff have said that it really does make a difference. It's less distracting having that acoustical wallpaper there, so I'm glad we did that. And as we look to the future, we're, we've got some technology updates and some programming And I'll talk a little bit about that, and then introduce you to TJ. Since we serve both Virginia and Tennessee citizens, we were fortunate enough to be able to apply for both the Tennessee and Virginia ARPA grants, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, which I'm sure you're all aware of, but we already, we know we got one of those through Virginia already. We were approved for that one. It was 21,000. And we're able to make the J. Henry Kegley Meeting Room and the Conference Room, as well as the Children's Train Station Room, where Michelle Page does the Storytime, and the EvoCA Meeting Room. We're ready to do updates on those rooms to make them more able to do virtual programmings, essentially. They're going to be, let's see, they'll have new laser projectors and wall-mounted huddle cams and HDMI signal boosters. I don't know what all this stuff is, but apparently it's, it's good. So, we're excited about that. Okay, I wanted to say a couple other things, then I'll let TJ talk to you for a few minutes. I talked to you about us wanting to do the programs together as far as do the same kind of, some of the same things at EvoCA and Maine, but also I wanted to tell you that we've added a couple of new databases. Heritage Hub is one of those, and Black Life in America, and we have some new tutorials on our webpage. So, I could talk a lot more about things, but I don't want to talk forever. There's a great new database that we have now that you might have heard about before called the Foundation Directory, and TJ DeWitt, who is fantastic that I work with, he is the Jones Creativity Center Director, he's going to talk to you about that, and thank you for letting me give you a little bit of an update on what's going on. TJ?
I'm TJ DeWitt, and as Tanya said, I'm
I'm TJ DeWitt, and as Tanya said, I'm the Director of the Jones Creativity Center. We've just gone a new resource that's mostly for nonprofits to help search for funding, grants, foundations to talk to. And it's available for free at our main branch library. Little, some stats, we really have a lot of nonprofits here. We have 739 in the area and 153 just here in Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia. And really, nonprofits make up over 10% of the employment here in Sullivan County. So this could affect many people here in the area. This Foundation Directory is unsurpassed in scope. You can see they have 4 million grants added yearly. It's updated daily, and they have detailed profiles of funders, grants, recipients, and companies. So it's pretty good stuff. Basically, it takes project-based search. You can put a plain word search, you might not be able to read it there, but I put in "after-school meals in Sullivan County, Tennessee." You hit search, and it figured out that I was looking for out-of-school programming, food aid, and in Sullivan County, Tennessee. And you could adjust those. If you want to go wider, you can switch from Sullivan County to all of Tennessee. You can tweak through the advanced search. But you can see, just from that quick search, it gives me that there's 42 grantmakers that have made grants in Sullivan County for food aid and after-school programming. That's 138 total grants, and it's 15 recipients, and they tell about the 990 tax forms if you want to look at those. So then you can get into the detailed profiles. So the one circle there is the CenturyLink Foundation there. And when I go in there, it tells you all about them. It tells what is being funded, their priorities, it shows where they're being funded, and also how big are the grants. So nonprofit can quickly assess if this funder may be good for them. It tells you the recent grants that were given and how big they were, what the most common grant amount was, so you know how much to ask, whether it'd be a good fit. It tells you any sorts of applications or RFPs, and also the giving limitations for that foundation. It even gives you the contact info, the website. It'll even give you board members, staff members, how they like to be contacted. So it puts you on the right track when you find a funder that you think might be a potential Now, since it's at the library, you can use any computer you want. You can bring your own laptop. You can sit in the atrium that we've just had renovated. You can come up for assistance. But then what you can do is you can download either PDF, or you can get your results emailed to you. Or if you just want a list of potential grantmakers, you can download a spreadsheet of that. So you get to come home with your results. You don't have to do it all at the library. So it's available at the main branch as long as you're on our Wi-Fi or Internet. Anytime our hours, you can just come and search through it. If you want training on how to use it, we can give one-on-one trainings by appointment, and we'll be having classes and group trainings. Our next one's actually going to be October the 27th at the Summit through Bristol Organizations, but it's open to the public. So I hope you come and join us and learn about the tool, and hopefully it can bring new money to our nonprofits here in Bristol. Thank you, Counsel, for giving us time to talk about our things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one public hearing on tonight's agenda. The public hearing is hereby open to provide a review of the city's fulfillment of the Annexation Plan of Services for property located at 2467 Weaver Pike. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, as Counsel is aware of our statute, the city is required to, every six months following an annexation, to provide an opportunity for a public hearing and detail the status of the plan of services for the particular property. 2467 Weaver Pike was annexed by request on April 6, 2021, so to that end, we're providing the six-month plan of services report. And Ms. Sherith Young, Planning Services Manager, will detail that.
Good evening again. So it's hard to believe it's been six months since this property was annexed, but we are required by state law to provide a six-month update and a one-year update on the annexation approval. So as we talked in April, most everything in the plan of services that was approved was available as soon as the annexation was approved by City Council. The one outstanding item was extension of the sanitary sewer. We are required to make that happen within one year. And as of right now, that has been designed, it has been permit-approved by TDOT, and so installation of that sewer line will be very short-term and certainly meet with the one-year requirement. So we did advertise this as we're supposed to by state laws in a Bristol Herald Courier advertisement in September. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Would anyone in the audience like to address the counsel on this matter? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address before making your comments. Seeing none, this public hearing is hereby closed. Next, we have the Parents of Citizens. This brings us to the Parents of Citizens section of our agenda. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address City Council on any matter that is not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will not likely be made at this time, since in most cases neither the City Council nor the City Manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The City Manager will look into the matter and report back to City Council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concerns. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are not transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I've been provided a list of individuals desiring to address counsel this evening. First on the list is Val Cosmider, Cosmin?
Perfect, Cosmider.
Cosmider.
So good evening, Mayor, Council members, and Mr. City Manager. I am Val Cosmider, and I'm here to open the dialogue.
Excuse me, Mr. Cosmider, would you tell us where your?
Oh, 19 Ashworth Court, Johnson City, Tennessee. Our organization, the Boone Lake Association, is based here in Piney Flats, just for the record. I'm here tonight to open the dialogue with regard to working with Bristol, Tennessee to develop the last piece of funding for the Holston River Trash Skimmer for Boone Lake. For nearly 40 years, the Boone Lake Association has worked to keep Boone Lake safe and clean for recreational use. This preservation of our area's largest environmental resource helps to contribute some $120 million annually to our local economies. During its entire history, the association has used manual methods to remove logs, trash, garbage, and a myriad of flotsam from the waters of the lake. With the drawdown of the lake associated with repairing the dam, a tremendous amount of materials washed onto the lakebed and subsequently into the lake. Boone Lake Association and TVA have partnered to remove the bulk of this material in a Herculean effort, which by all indications has left the lake in fine condition and has been a welcome resource during the past summer. This autumn and this winter, TVA will mulch certain areas of the lake which they have not had access to or which require certain water level in order to gain access to the remaining vegetation. While much of the effort of the past couple of years has been on large materials such as logs, old dock materials, cuttings, and other big items, substantial pieces of styrofoam seem to have been one of the number-one issues this year, the effort in the next few months will be on smaller material. This material regularly accumulates as slicks in the lake, which are large areas of impenetrable material ranging from green vegetation to all manners of trash. Boone Lake Association has studied the solution to removing this material and determined that a mechanical trash skimmer is the best, most economical answer to removing this material. Indeed, Washington County and Johnson City assisted the association in purchasing the first trash skimmer, which is currently in use on the Watogas side of the lake. Now is time for the second skimmer to be acquired for the Holston side of Boone Lake. Already, we have 75% of the funding committed to purchase this equipment. We are here tonight to begin the conversation with Bristol, Tennessee, to find a way to set aside $31,250 from their share of the TVA economic impact payments, which Bristol receives while the dam continues under repair and then on a sliding scale for some years after the dam work is completed. As one mayor told us during our conversations, "We can think of no more appropriate use for these economic impact funds than using them to help preserve the resource which generates so much for our community." Bristol, Tennessee will receive $600,000 in economic impact payments.
Mr. Cosmider?
Sir?
Your three minutes is up. I failed to let you know you have three minutes, so if you want to finish that, one comment you got there.
Four more sentences. "We would like to work with you, Bristol, Tennessee, to find a way to donate just 5% of these monies towards preservation of this valuable and enjoyable resource. In that regard, we would like to schedule time during the next working session for discussions to begin. Thank you so much for your consideration of this important regional opportunity."
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Zachary Johnson, and I'll go ahead and say again, I failed to mention that we have a three-minute time limit on each individual.
So I came here to talk about?
Zach, could you tell us, tell the audience your address, please?
Mayor, maybe city and state would be sufficient for juvenile.
City and state would be fine.
Bristol, Tennessee?
Thank you.
Well, I had an idea that might be able to mitigate or at least prevent what's happening with Bristol, Virginia happening to us through the recycling program we have here, which isn't being used to its fullest at the moment. I was thinking that since we had a giant recycling center over in Kingsport, we might be able to make a deal with them to sell what we get from recycling. And that's kind of getting off topic. I was thinking we could maybe hand out smaller bins, like the trash ones, to people so they can recycle from them and have a pickup time with separate trucks. They'll pick those up, which might get more, well, it's likely to get more people to participate because they don't have to go to the recycling center to deal with that business. Over time, we could move to larger barrels, like the ones we have for trash. I came from LA four years ago, and they had a well-working service there, which more than paid for the cost and allowed for them to have a bigger budget because they sold what they had overseas. And I was thinking we could do the same thing with that center in Kingsport. For communication purposes, we could always leave a flyer or something of that sort on the trash barrels next time the trash is collected from them, like we do with Thanksgiving, perhaps, when we put flyers on there telling them that there won't be trash pickup on a certain day. So that might be useful. I'm not sure what else to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got to tell you, you've got great ideas, and I really appreciate it. I'm sure all of our councilmen really appreciate your thoughtfulness in that. And so I think we all can appreciate that, and I would like to ask that maybe we look into recycling. I think it may have been mentioned a couple of times in the past, so really appreciate your comments, and maybe we could have a presentation in one of our work sessions about possible alternatives. It's been about 20 years now since Bristol, Tennessee has had a recycling program. So thank you very much. You're very thoughtful in your point you said, and we appreciate that.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Welcome back anytime. Next, we have Ms. Christine Johnson. You're good? You've done a great job. Next is Mr. John Kellogg.
Joel.
Joel Kellogg. Sorry if that?
That's a good-looking t-shirt, too, by the way. Thank you. This is actually one of my favorites, and it's not black, and it doesn't say Harley or have a rock group on it, so. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight. Kind of piggyback off of what the young man was talking about here. My name is Joel Kellogg. I live at 1204 Maryland Avenue. So tonight, we have a community awareness meeting at the train station at 7:00. So I'm here to formally invite Mayor, Council, managers, anybody who wants to come. Contrary to some talk going around, this is not going to be a bashing session. This is a chance for the community to come together and share their stories of what's going on in their personal life and their homes with this landfill. So as you can tell, it's an emotional issue for me. But the big part of this meeting tonight is to get our community together and share our stories, and I think those are important for all of you to hear. Okay? So if this runs long, we'll be there a couple hours. We'd love to see you. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in attendance this evening that'd like to address counsel? Seeing none, we'll move on to appointments. Next, we have one appointment to be made to the Parks and Recorations Commission. The appointment will fulfill an unexpired term of office ending June 30, 2024. The candidate is Justin Hutchison. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
Justin has served on Parks and Rec before, and I think that he'll be a good contributor, and I will support his nomination this evening.
Anyone else? Please pass your ballots. Thank you.
Keen votes for Justin Hutchinson. Luttrell votes for Justin Hutchinson. Powers votes for Justin Hutchinson. And Turner votes for Justin Hutchinson.
Okay, we have one ordinance and two resolutions to be considered this evening. First item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twelve, amending chapter seventy of the city's Code of Ordinances to regulate on-street parking of commercial and recreational vehicles. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize ordinance twenty-one dash twelve?
Yes, Mayor, this item was considered by council and favorably approved at the April, I mean, excuse me, at the September seventh meeting. As councils are aware, you've, and it's been, this has been a topic for a work session for the last three to four months, I suppose. Council's explored avenues to address on-street parking concerns regarding commercial and recreational vehicles in residential areas. Ordinance twenty-one twelve amends chapter seventy to prohibit the use of public streets, alleys, rights-of-way for the purchase of, for the purpose of parking either commercial or recreational vehicles in residential areas between the hours of ten PM and six AM, except for the purpose of actively loading or unloading or servicing adjacent property. During the remaining hours of six AM to ten PM, the parking of, of the vehicle in the public right-of-way is limited to two hours daily. Commercial vehicles may extend this if they're actively loading, unloading, or actively working on adjacent property again. Commercial vehicles are defined as any vehicle with a gross weight of eight thousand pounds or more, designed to carry sixteen or more passengers, transporter of hazardous material, a vehicle or trailer in excess of twenty feet, or a vehicle having three or more axles. Recreation vehicles are defined as motorhomes, campers, folding campers, fifth-wheel, or attached or unattached trailers primarily for use for recreational purposes such as a boat, a boat trailer. In addition, in, in the ordinance, residential areas are defined as areas zoned as residential districts under the city zoning ordinance. Several members of staff have worked on this over, over the period in which council has considered this. Certainly, our city attorney, our police chief, and our director of administrative or development services is here that can also respond to questions.
Does any member of council have any question for staff? Is there a, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-one twelve.
No second.
Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance twenty-one dash twelve? Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Okay, I believe we're ready for a vote.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin is absent for record. Keen?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash one oh two, approving the use of tax increment financing for the overlooked residential development proposed in the Volunteer Parkway South Redevelopment District. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the resolution twenty-one dash one oh two?
Yes, council heard a presentation at their September twenty-eighth meeting from Mr. Joel Conkin, who's legal counsel for the Bristol Housing Authority. And this, this deals with a proposed amendment to the Volunteer Parkway South Redevelopment Plan. Landstar Partners LLC, which principals of Danny and Carla Carst are here with us this evening and will be speaking with you shortly. Tom Anderson is also with us here as our economic development director to detail the essence of the, of the project. It is important to note that the Bristol Housing Authority considered this matter at their April twenty-ninth meeting and gave a favorable response to advance the project forward. This matter will also be, be discussed later this month by the Sullivan County Commission. Tom, would you like to detail the project?
Thank you, Bill. Good evening. It was actually the September meeting, not April meeting, that they, that they passed.
I'm stuck on April tonight for some reason. We started off with an annexation, so.
Up on the screen is the, the Volunteer Parkway South Redevelopment District. That's, that's in its entirety, and you all had seen eventually this will come up. I skipped it. Okay, well, this is the site plan. I was looking for the rendering, which has got all the greenery on it, but this is actually the site plan of the development that we're discussing this evening. And the developer, well, the project that's being discussed, the developer is going to provide the residential lots for a hundred and fifty-eight units. It'll be approximately ninety-six single-family and sixty-two townhomes. And as you can see, the single-family residences will be between two thousand and twenty-eight hundred square feet and have at least three bedrooms and two baths. The townhomes will be similar as far as the bathrooms and the bedrooms, but it'll be sixteen hundred, eighteen hundred square feet. We have several renderings. These are townhouses that'll be very similar, too. These are the single-family. There's, there's several different units. They will be, again, very similar to these, but this is the part that I, I think is going to be where, I'll take a, a moment or two. It's going to be the actual calculations for the tax increment finance. Right now, you have a, a base value currently of the seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, and we have the, the current tax, county tax rate is two dollars forty point six two cents, and then the city tax rate is one point nine eight six three. Once the construction is complete, you've got a new assessed value of the seven million seventy-four thousand, five hundred, and that's going to be at residential. That'll be at the twenty-five percent residential value. With those calculations, you've got a debt service with the county of point two-two and a debt service rate of the city of point one-one. So these are Joel's numbers, Joel Conkin's numbers, so it had the county first. You look at the total taxes that will generate after this is built out of a hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Then you have the ba, the base tax rate, which will come off of that. You have the county tax debt service, which is that point two-two, which is going to be thirteen thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. So when you look at the increment that's going to be available, it's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. That is the increment that is available for, for the developer. However, the developer is only going to take sixty-five percent of that, so there will be growth. So when you see the total increment after the administration fee for that the housing authority will take, it'll be eighty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars, and that'll go towards retiring the debt. That, that'll be the total one point seven million borrowed on behalf of the project. Going to the city taxes, right now, once you do the calculation on the build-out, it's going to be a hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents, which will be the taxes realized. Then you have the base taxes that we're getting right now that'll be taken out. Then you have the debt service, which is the point one-one for the city, which is the six, six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty cents, leaving an increment of one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-nine cents, which, again, the developer is only going to take sixty-five percent, not the hundred percent. So the total increment that'll go towards retiring the debt that'll be borrowed on their behalf is seventy-three thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eighty cents. So when you look at the total amount for both city and county, that'll be, the increment given towards the debt service is one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. And the housing authority will borrow one point seven million dollars, and it'll be amortized over fifteen years, and that hundred and fifty-eight thousand will go to pay that debt down. So if, if the taxes, if the tax rate goes up, property values go up, it'll pay off quicker. But if not, right now, that's the amortization schedule. And as I said, the, the holdback is what he's calling it. We'll actually see growth. We'll see growth in the city and we'll see growth in the county. So the new taxes coming into the city will be forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents, plus the debt service. And then the county will realize sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eleven cents.
So the forty-eight thousand, four fifty-nine will be in addition to the base tax.
The base tax, correct.
Fourteen thousand, nine seventy-five.
Which we're getting already, so this is new. This will be new income for the city.
Right, about sixty-three thousand dollars.
And the developers are here if you all have any questions specific to the development.
Now, as these homes are sold to individuals, do they remain within the TIF, or are they, are those individual properties pulled out of the TIF?
No, they, they become, that's the financing piece. As they pay their property taxes, it goes to the, the county, and then the county will cut a check to the housing authority for paying off the debt.
You said that was fifteen years, Tom, on...
Yes, it's amortized over fifteen years.
But it's an improvement of thirty-five percent. And we need the houses.
And we need the rooftops.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Say it.
Would any member of council like to discuss resolution twenty-one dash one oh two? Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash one oh three.
You got it.
Wait a minute, I missed that.
Roca.
Roca, sorry.
(laughing).
Sorry about that. Mary Lee, I think we're ready for a vote.
Yes, sir. Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin absent. Keen?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
The developers are really excited about this. So Danny, Carla, thank you so much for bringing the business to Bristol. We have to do more projects here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Great job.
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
No, no, come on in.
It's always best to wait for the vote.
I'm Danny Carst, Kingsport, Tennessee, and part of the development team. My wife's here with me and my dear friend Fred. Thank you all. I just want to say thank you, Chad. Last, I have a keen memory for certain things, and a lot of things conveniently I don't. But I do remember you coming down, I think it was May, about May the nineteenth or something. It was on a Thursday, and he's, he bet us in Johnson City, he said, "We'll get a meeting with staff." And I thought, yeah, yeah, no, Bill, you know, just be, he's nice. But in fact, it was the next week, we had a meeting with the team, really great to work with. Bill and I couldn't meet one day, so he come out on the front porch, it was raining like cats and dogs, and we sit there and talked, and it made me feel even more comfortable. And I think Tom has been great, but I remember when I called him this August, once we got clearance, and I said, you know, I know, you know, because we got a clear, there's one item that was sticking, not with the city, but on something else, and I said, "Hey, Tom, could we get to that?" I said, "You think we can make it by this date?" Well, tonight, we're here talking. I, I really didn't think we could, or I didn't think he could make that happen. So stuff like that really matters. And then these four-thirty calls from Tim on Friday, that he calls me, saying, "Hey, we got this one thing." And he's done that like two or three times, and I think sometimes we talk to like five-fifteen. Those little stories, like, those are, they may sound little, but they're real, and that's what's making a difference, I think, for you guys right now. And I just encourage them to keep it up, because it's been, like, it's, the difficulty wasn't with the city. The difficulty was internally, certain things we were having to work through with the, the building side of the, the company, D.R. Horton, and it wasn't real difficult, but they had to make sure there was clearance on some things with their company. And we got all that cleared early August. He was in a traffic jam, Tom was, in Knoxville when I called him, and he, but he was able to get those things turned around, so sometimes y'all need to hear, I know you hear mostly complaints, but your team has, has been great for us to deal with. And to that, I just wanted to say, it just feels fresh to be able to, with people that's hungry, to go get it and try to win. It's, it's been great. Thank you all for your support and respect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We would just encourage that you continue to share those stories with lots of people.
Because you really do want, when you got people trying to help you, and you, you know, they want to get in there and win it, and makes you feel like Bill and I sitting out there, and the rain was blowing on us, and, and, but I thought, I asked him to come out, because I couldn't go in. I said, "Well, come on out." And it was starting to rain, and we stood there on the porch and talked for like thirty-five minutes, and that got me more comfortable, too. Sometimes it's about, for me, anyway, a lot of times, it's about relationships. And thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmen and councilwomen and all that stuff. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
We can't wait for your next project.
Real proud of the work that Tom and our economic development team did. Tim and our planning department and Bill really stepped up, put together a meeting in a week. It was during the middle of COVID. It was not an easy time to do it, but as it turns out, we got projects out of us. And also, I'll just mention one thing, and a few conversations with Danny, talked about how, you know, how it's worked in Kingsport, Johnson City, Bristol, and other areas, and he said that Bristol is a really good place, if not the best, and easiest place to work. So thank you, Tim, for all your hard work and your department's work. Please pass along how proud the city council is of, of the entire department.
Absolutely.
Okay, next, we have resolution twenty-one dash one oh three, authorizing the city to retain legal counsel. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize resolution twenty-one dash oh three?
Yes, Mayor, over much of the past year, the city and its citizens have been adversely impacted by, impacted by offensive odors resulting from the operation of the Bristol, Virginia landfill. Council has determined that it's necessary to retain legal counsel to advise them as to the legal options available with respect to the landfill. Staff has identified the law firm of Troutman Pepper, Hamilton Sanders LLP as having the necessary knowledge, experience, and personnel to represent, represent the city in very complex legal matters involving this landfill. Resolution twenty-one one oh three authorized the city to retain the legal services of, of this firm to provide the legal advice, necessary, retain necessary experts, develop strategies, and represent the city in any proceeding that might arise as a result of the operation of the landfill.
Does any member of council have a question for staff?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-one one oh three.
No second.
Would any member of council like to discuss resolution twenty-one dash one oh three? Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Hearing none. Mary Lee, I believe we're ready for a vote.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin absent. Keen?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes. This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, the minutes of the September seventh, twenty twenty-one city council meeting, minutes of the September twentieth, twenty twenty-one city council call meeting, minutes of the September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one city council work session. Resolution twenty-one one oh four approving a grant agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the utilization of Federal Highway Administration planning funds for the Bristol Metropolitan Planning Organization. Resolution twenty-one one oh five authorizing entry into engineering services agreement for bio-solage de-watering system improvements. Resolution twenty-one one oh six awarding a bid for the demolition of the bio-tower at the wastewater treatment plant. Resolution twenty-one one oh seven authorizing acceptance of highway safety grant from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. Resolution twenty-one one oh eight awarding a proposal for compensation structure evaluation. Resolution twenty-one one oh nine amending administrative services agreement and appendices with allegiance. And resolution twenty-one one ten awarding a proposal for automated meter-reading system upgrade. Resolution twenty-one one eleven awarding a bid for the purchase of pickup trucks. Resolution twenty-one one twelve awarding a bid for the purchase of sport utility vehicles. Resolution twenty-one one thirteen awarding the bid for the purchase of articulating tractor and attachments. Resolution twenty-one one fourteen approving the renewal agreements with members of the Northeast Tennessee-Virginia Home Consortium. Resolution twenty-one one one five authorizing entry into service agreement with Sports Facilities Advisory LLC. Resolution twenty-one one one six awarding a proposal for design and installation of playground equipment. Resolution twenty-one one one seven awarding a bid for purchase of zero-turn mower. And resolution twenty-one one one eight approving the relocation of the skateboard.
Would any member of council like any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Would any member of council like any item to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to see if we can pull off Resolution, I think it's been made about the skate park. If we pull one off, what we'll do is go, go right around the consent agenda. We'll both address the consent agenda, and then we'll just get that out for discussion. I just want to make sure that I understand everything that's going forward with the skate park.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the twenty-one dash one one eight.
I'll second.
Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Turner?
Yes.
Margaret. Fire Robin absent. Keane?
Yes.
Powers? Yes. Letrel.
Yes.
So can we just kind of go through that?
Yeah, sure. This, this was an item of discussion during our September twenty-eighth work session. First, let me say that, that Ed Depew with the school system made a presentation to our Parks and Recreation Commission earlier in September regarding the reconfiguring of the skate park, which would, which would take a portion of it and then realign a portion of that park to accommodate the expansion of the Vance Middle, or the, excuse me, the Bristol Middle School track and field complex that they're building there with the retaining wall and so forth and, and necessity of, of relocating or reconfiguring a portion of that skate park. As staff understands, well, that presentation was made to Parks and Recreation Commission. The Parks and Recreation Commission gave a favorable response to that request. And then as we discussed it during our September twenty-eighth work session, it was staff's understanding that, that there was a desire to relocate the, the skate park in, in its entirety to a yet-to-be-determined location and allow that entire campus to be utilized by, by the middle school for their purposes.
So I think some of the concerns was that we're going to do about skate park for a certain period of time. I believe that we've been looking at some alternative sites, has any update on that?
I think our, Terry, do you have any update on? And, and I know Terry has been evaluating other sites, but I'm, I'm not sure where he is in that process.
We have identified a, a couple potential sites. Spoke to Danielle. I mean, some of those properties were purchased through special funds. We have to make sure that the, the use of that property would be proper. So I've got about three properties right now. We're looking at their potential locations and the plan was to present those at, at the next work session. As far as the timeline for anything with the existing park, because right now there's not a timeline. I spoke to Ed Depew at the school system. They do not have a, a start date for that project. So we're, we're really kind of, kind of playing, playing along to see what their, their process is and when they start. So I don't know a timetable for moving stuff. The good thing about our park is everything there's modular. It's, we can just pick it up and take it someplace else. So it's, it's, I don't think we can have a huge loss of, of that park. I think we can put something back pretty quick.
What kind of use do you think it's getting? Is it getting quite a bit of use or?
Well, I, I think it's getting minimal use right now. It has no parking. Access has been severely affected by the construction at the school, as well as any parking. It was also closed for a long period of time during COVID. And we closed all of our playgrounds and basketball courts, so it was closed during that period of time. There is some use coming back. It, it has never been the best setup to begin with. So I would hope that as, as we look at other options, that maybe we can, we can make it a little better than it was before. It was built out of necessity in the past. It was actually with the police department that happened and we actually built that park because we were in some problems with where they were skating. And I think we need to continue to address that, but it does need to be a park that, that serves the need.
The property, you said the three properties, you said we are the unmissed properties.
We, we do own two of them. We believe were purchased with CDBT funds. So we've got to make sure that that is a proper use for two of them. And the third one, I, I just looked at some by the city. I don't know that we know of anything special purchase on it. It has a right of way beside of it that we could abandon. So there's plenty of property at either of the three locations.
I think it's a mission to maybe, it could be one of the locations that maybe had some natural aspects to it that might really lead itself to a, a really kind of cool setup for, for a skate park.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the, the, the one side off of Weaver Park, I think certainly has some, some nice aesthetics. The other one is, you know, kind of remote down by the railroad tracks, you know, kind of in the bottom land off of, off of Melrose on the fourth. So, I mean, they all have different aspects, but I think we just need to evaluate them. And then we need to decide what we're gonna, what we're gonna put back. I've been doing some resort, research on, you know, what size park should we build for our community? There's some good numbers out there based on, you know, our population and our size, what we should build. But then there's, you know, the, the question's been brought up a couple of times. Do we, do we make it better and, and make it for bikes and, and, you know, the, the other things that they're using in these parks as well, like around us? So there's a lot of data still to run through, but I'm working on, I'll have it, I'll have it for your next meeting.
So when, if we were to do an upgrade, which I think is exciting to do something, maybe a little bit of, you know, an upgrade, do you think we would be using, you know, our current crew and staff are pretty, pretty spread thin? Do you think that there's subcontracting out or, or, you know, companies specializes and stuff like that? Or how do you, do you give any thought to?
Well, I mean, we're, we are very shorthanded and it's probably not going to get better anytime soon. You know, if we go with a concrete surface, absolutely, I think you're, you're contracting out. If we go back with an asphalt surface, you know, could we do that in-house, public works? Timing, I don't know. I'd say we'd probably look at farming it out.
Subcontractor can probably make it go faster as well.
And timing on everything. I mean, you know, we're, you know, we're quickly approaching winter and going out of the work season, which is also going to halt process on the, the middle school project as well.
I just think the main concern was it might take a lot of time, probably sit there for a couple of years. And so, you know, if we can, if we can kind of get things moving along, I think everybody's on the same page and all agree to go ahead and proceed with this.
Well, it sounds like that we would not have to, even if we vote on this tonight, we will not have to move it right now anyway until everything at the school is.
Go start grading.
Yeah, that, so.
I see this as a win-win. It, it gives the middle school and the school system complete control of their footprint. We know that our skate park, no offense, y'all did a great job back then, but it's antiquated and it needs to be upgraded. And we have the opportunity to do that. And the middle school is not fixing to start grading tomorrow, so we've got some time for Parks and Rec to, to make these determinations and to do their due diligence. It couldn't happen at a better time, for us to vote on this at a better time of the year because we're going into the winter season where there isn't a lot of use and to get the plan together to be ready to go in the spring. And I agree. It was brought up that, you know, just didn't want this thing to drag out for a year, two years, because we have, have children that, or are young adults, adults that really enjoy it. And depending on the features, there would be even more that could enjoy it. So I see the upside. The school system has complete control of that footprint and we provide an even better experience for our community.
Something like that, property just off Melrose might be conducive to walking to from, you know, from areas, from, uh, areas, you know, that it's close to the same area. So, I mean, that, that sounds good.
Yeah, Chad, far as, you know, the usage, I've been going by there periodically at different times. And you do see a lot of kids, younger people are using the park, which is good. And, and I, too, would like to see something nicer because, hey, you know, you've got to admit, you know, skateboarding was Olympic sport this year, so, you know, it is picking up in some popularity. And, but yeah, we don't want to wait a long time to get something done. I think Kingsport went through a situation where, you know, they closed their park and they was down a year and a half, two years, I believe, before they got something going. Maybe it longer.
Yeah, Kingsport's going through a, a unique scenario. Their, their property was actually purchased for a build-out and that company's building them a new park. So they're going to be down for a while, but they're going to come out the backside with a really nice park.
Yeah. But the point is, you know, it's something that's there and it'd be, they'll want to be viewed as a takeaway if we don't replace it. And, you know, it's something that the police department thinks there's a big need for some of these kids to stay off the streets, which I agree with.
And Chad, to your point, I think, you know, location, 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 but something that has easy access and where there is a, a police presence and would be great. So if no one has any other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-one one eighteen.
Thank you.
I'll say.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we're ready for a vote.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin absent. Keane?
Yes.
Powers? Yes. Letrel.
Yes. Okay. We're ready for word of education report. Couldn't tell if that was you back there or not, sitting in the dark.
Sorry, I came in a little bit late. I apologize about that.
All right.
And I know I'm keeping you from a very important meeting, so I'll be brief. I just had a few things to celebrate. Thank you for your support of relocating the skate park. That is a nice gesture. It was unexpected. We were willing to reconfigure it and leave it there, certainly. But it's a nice gesture to allow us access to the rest of that property, so we appreciate that very much. Thank you. I'd just like to recognize our school principals this month. October is National Principals Month. And so, as you're well aware, our principals selflessly give of their time and their service to our students in Bristol and they're top-notch. And so I'd just like to publicly recognize those. We have several new principals this year. Mr. Brett Heron at Anderson Elementary, Ms. Denise McKee at Avoca, Ms. Kelly Campbell at Fairmount, Ms. Tanica Harden at Haynesfield, Ms. Jane Leo at Holston View, Mr. Seymour Ray at Tennessee Middle School, Ms. Kim Kirk at Tennessee High School, and Mr. Jeremy Humphrey at our Tennessee Online Public Schools. So those folks are great individuals and they certainly are the, the bedrock to what we do for our students and our community. So if you see them out, please thank them for their service. We had two students who qualified as National Merit Scholars this year, which is a, a huge endeavor and a nationally recognized award. Amy Shee at Tennessee High School and Grayson Latanzi at Tennessee Online Public School. It's the first time we've had someone from TOPS earn that, that scholarship merit. And Grayson also, just recently, actually two days ago, found out that he earned a perfect score on the ACT as well. So bright futures for those students ahead of them. And then also would like to publicly recognize Mr. Ken Oster. Mr. Oster is a volunteer in our school district. He's been working with our English language learners for years, not only our students in our buildings, but their families. He was recently recognized by the Tennessee School Boards Association as the Northeast Volunteer of the Year for our region. So out of the seventeen school districts in our region, he won that recognition. And so we wanted to publicly recognize him for that. That's all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions for me?
No question, but a comment, I've seen the building coming down.
I know, that's so exciting. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, we hope that'll come down the rest of the way soon. We need parking there and traffic flow for our buses to get them off Alabama. So, yeah, that's exciting.
It's like a big elephant bite at a time, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Managers Report.
Yes, Council, just a quick reminder of our work session on October twenty-sixth, eleven o'clock in the annex. Also, at your, at your seats this evening, you have a press release indicating the appointment of Holly Faran as our Finance Director. Holly has served in that capacity for the last several months following the departure of Tara Music. But also, it's equally as important to, to notify, to note, to note Holly's credentials as a certified public accountant. She has fourteen years of service with our fire department, with our finance department, and six years prior to that with the city of Johnson City. So we're receiving a, a very talented and knowledgeable individual. I think most of you know Holly from her participation in, in, in budget sessions previously. Also, we, we've, we've done some department reorganization. Ms. Tara Lawson has been promoted, who's currently with us, has been promoted to Finance and Customer Service Manager. Tara possesses a, an undergraduate degree from U V A Y as in accounting and is a certified municipal finance officer. And then we've also employed Krista Gray Bill Byrd as our new Budget and Accounting Manager. Krista has served previously as a Finance Director in Carter County. She's currently employed by ETSU presently. She has an undergraduate degree, degree in accounting and finance and has a master's degree in business administration. So we're very proud of all three of these individuals and want to make you aware of the reorganization and the promotions. And this will be made available to the public tomorrow morning. Lastly, I mentioned, I, I need to mention that we really, we need to schedule an attorney client privilege meeting, we, with Troutman Pepper to, to evaluate and, and get some advice from them on how we move forward at this point. We've, in speaking with counsel there, there's some, some dates that they have available. This Thursday afternoon, October fourteenth. They also have Monday afternoon, October eighteenth, and then anytime on Wednesday, October twentieth. If none of those dates are suitable, then, then certainly we'll go back and, and find some other dates. We envision this meeting to be a Zoom meeting. It's not one where we would gather like we did our original discussions with this firm. So you can, you can dial in from your home offices. And, and this meeting is not subject to the Open, Open Meetings Act.
I would prefer Monday.
I'm good with any of the dates.
Just ask that if we could meet early afternoon rather than late afternoon, any time between one and two, realizing, hopefully we'll be through by three.
Sure.
Chad, are you good Monday? Mary?
Yeah, I'm good with the eighteen as well.
I've got a conflict. Thursday, Thursday afternoon is better than you guys.
No, I'm, I'm good any of the days.
I just can't till after two. Maybe one thirty. I could do one thirty on Thursday.
I can do that.
I'm good.
One thirty you're good?
Yep.
Can you do one thirty?
I can do one thirty on Monday. I've, I've, I've got a bunch of stuff on Monday.
Can you do one thirty on Thursday?
On Thursday.
I can do one thirty on Thursday.
Okay. No, I, I got Thursday afternoon would be great.
Okay.
Fourteenth, right?
Okay, so the, the consensus is one thirty on Thursday afternoon? All right, I will contact Councilwoman Fire Robin and make her aware of this and then look for a Zoom invitation for that meeting. So, okay. And then lastly, I'd like to express gratitude to staff, police, fire, Parks and Recreation, and public services for two back-to-back phenomenal weekends of activities and, and, and tourism. I've heard nothing but, but great comments regarding our festival and regarding the night race the following weekend. But it goes without being said that there's an awful lot of hours that, that the city provides in, in supporting both of those events. And I'd like to express my appreciation to staff for those, for those hours of involvement. That concludes my remarks.
I'll get over that and say thank to them as well. It did come off well, two great weekends, a weekend come up this weekend.
Yeah.
Great to have so many events. I appreciate everything our staff does, does do.
Absolutely.
Uh, I'll, I'll mention about our, our staff, you know, having, and, and the schedule was pretty thin. We have some exciting things to do. Or I think we're getting close or maybe already finished our Haynesfield project. Is that right? It's, okay. Yeah. And so that's, that's getting finished. That's, that's pretty exciting. And I think we've got a crew that are going to finish up the dog park over behind Kukui as quick as we can. But that, so we do have a lot of exciting things to, to think about. And I just want to reiterate how proud I am of the, of the team and working, uh, our developer, you know, on their projects. They're also working on, you know, other things to move forward. Density of properties and things that interest me, getting information on those lines. So thank you for all your hard work and, uh, thank you for, you know, being flexible and scheduled to meet with folks like that. It's, it was very important and it really says something to them, I just thank them for that. That's all I have.
I'll echo that. Tim, thank you very much. And Sherif as well, with all of the hard work that y'all do. It, it makes a huge difference. And congratulations to Holly. She'll do a great job in that position. And to Mary Lee, often an unsung hero, she does, I know she picks up so much slack in so many different directions and we just appreciate everything that you do. And, and Tom and Terry and our fire and safety, we really appreciate y'all as well. Our schools, during a trying time, I think y'all have tried to step up. You know, you hear so much about school boards and school districts and I'm so thankful for our school board and our school district and the thoughtfulness that goes into the decision-making with regard and the inclusion of the parents. and the thoughtfulness that goes into the decision-making with regard and the inclusion of the parents. It's very important, you know, it's, it's a team effort, but recognizing that parents are our first teachers, and that our teachers work hand in glove with them, and I appreciate all that y'all do.
I will ditty that, but I've got one thing to add. You know, I've often said, you know, you know, just how proud I am of all of our employees that work for the city of Bristol, Tennessee. But last week, several employees from various departments, it was fire department, police department, public works, community relations, dispatch, and I've probably missed someone, E M Ts, probably missed someone. But along with myself, we attended a class or a school for four days last week up at the Emergency Management Institute in Edinburg, Emmitsburg, Maryland. It was conducted by FEMA. And there was four days of intense instruction, along with two exercises. And we also, at this, at this session, we had members of Sullivan County, city of Kingsport, and we also had a member from Tima there as well, going through this process. And, you know, just, just want to say that, you know, how proud I am of everyone and the performance that they done, the interaction that they just jumped in there. You know, when you're thrown something, you don't know what it's going to be. But just the way they responded, the way they reacted, you know, again, hats off to them, and just very, very proud of this organization. With that, one other thing, I'll, I'll shut up. I did overlook a one o'clock meeting that I forgot. Could we make that two o'clock on Thursday? Would that, would that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry, James.
No, it's fine.
You said?
Yeah, it's good.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.